Let's move on to our first briefing, the AAPS Environmental Sustainability Framework. Dr. Swift.
Thank you, Madam President and Trustees. Mr. Emile Lautzana is going to join us. And while he's coming, I just want to add my deep gratitude to the members of the Environmental Task Force. What a delight to have your words and your presence with us this evening. And I just have to say to those who spoke remote, you look beautiful on the big screen, and we really appreciated hearing from you. Before Mr. Lautzana is ready to begin, I have just two slides that I'd like to share in terms of the context for our presentation this evening. We have been on a journey with environmental sustainability in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, and I loved Mr. Danny Zekiel's reference to 1978 and being in the cafeteria. I was also in some cafeterias around that year, and it has been quite a long journey. Trustees, this slide is not fancy, but I wanted to just touch on the background and context. We have a strong foundation in the Ann Arbor community and Ann Arbor Public Schools. If I say the name, a strong foundation of six decades of quality environmental education. If I say the names, Dr. Bill Stapp, Eunice Hendricks, Bill Browning, Dave Siegel, and tonight you saw Court Imbersino. And of course, Danny Zekiel is on that list, as are a few other of our retired and current teachers. This is a legacy of quality environmental education, and we are so proud of it. And it was back in 2018. I remember exactly the meeting we were in when the trustees raised the idea of let's document and codify our commitment to the environment through policy. And I remember, Trustee Kelly, you were on governance at the time, and we did work to prepare this policy. It's a beautiful policy that begins with our recognition that climate change is real, increasing, and caused by human activity. Also, that fall of 2018, we dedicated the Freeman Environmental Education Center. I know it's a humble location on 40 acres, half of it grassland, half of it wooded, but it is a beautiful place to have exploration and activities related to environmental education. I'm delighted that they have a student advocacy board that meets out at Freeman and virtually to carry on this work as well. A key and pivotal point on this context is in November of 2019, just three years ago right now, and we appreciated the support of our environmental sustainability partners in the community, in the area. We were able to pass the 2019 bond. And as we all know, our efforts and our commitment toward environmental sustainability were going to be piecemeal without some significant resource to be able to move the plan forward. So the bond really was a way for us to prioritize updating our learning environments in our schools and spending the money needed, making the investments needed to make those updates environmentally responsible. So that was one of our four cornerstones of the 2019 bond. It was just a year ago at this table that our Board of Education authorized the AAPS Environmental Sustainability Task Force. And I've appreciated the two trustees, Trustee Cara Harrow and Trustee Johnson, who have served as liaisons to the task force, and many trustees have stayed closely connected to the work of the task force. I also want to give a shout out to our student, Michael McColliskey, and our other student, Virginia Hee, who have been part of the Environmental Sustainability Task Force. And I hope that they get to speak to us sometime in these next three weeks as we're having these discussions. I appreciate our community partners in the U of M, in the city of Ann Arbor, and the Best we can tell, this comprehensive environmental sustainability framework is the first of its kind in the state of Michigan. In fact, we are not aware of another district that even has an environmental sustainability plan. That does not mean that the plan is perfect. It does mean that we are taking a significant step forward to lead the way with environmental sustainability. So what are our next steps from this evening? We're delighted to welcome Mr. Emile Lautzana. I would be remiss if I did not thank him publicly for his work this past year and many years on environmental sustainability, and this past year to bring this plan that we're bringing this evening forward. We will, beginning tomorrow, open a community portal. Mr. Clulley will have all of that information out so that folks from all over the community, our parents, I'm really excited to hear from our students. We want to receive input and feedback, and we're using a tool called Thought Exchange. It will allow for very robust feedback. On December 14, two weeks from this evening, we will be bringing forward trustees' summary of the feedback that we're hearing from our community and any adjustments that we feel need to be made to the framework. And then on December 21, Environmental Sustainability Framework will be shared in a second briefing, and we recommend the adoption of the framework by the Board of Education. And so with that, Mr. Lautzana is here. Trustees, I appreciate your leadership on this endeavor. We have come a very long way, and yet, just as one of our speakers said this evening, this is really a starting point on the serious work in support of the environment. And we know that, and we're up to the challenge. Having a framework, having a plan, puts us in a great position to be able, having the framework, having the commitment of our community, and having the resources of the bond, really give us that opportunity and the challenge to move forward. I appreciate Mr. Lautzana, your vision, and I look forward to your sharing our environmental sustainability framework for the Ann Arbor Public Schools.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Swift. Good evening, President Lazarus, Board of Trustees, and Ann Arbor community. This is really is a momentous day for Ann Arbor Public Schools. I've been involved in green building and sustainability at schools pretty much my entire professional life. I've had a couple runs at trying to do this with institutions of this scale and have not gotten this far before, so it's really awesome to be here presenting this framework to the Board today and to our community for their thoughts and feedback. And I do want to thank, and we'll have some slides about the task force, but thank you, Dan, and Jenny, and Jan, and Court for speaking today, and all of the task force members. I mean, it was a lot of work. It was a lot of meetings, a lot of evenings, and all of your expertise, insight, and thoughts has really helped shape a very strong plan for the Ann Arbor Public School District. So this is just the overview of the presentation. On the right side of the slide, you'll notice that's kind of the guiding graphic. The framework is organized into three main sections: environmental education and climate literacy, responsible operations, maintenance and construction, and the third section, healthy and sustainable school campuses. These areas for action are informed by a set of core values, shared commitments, and community partnerships, and overarching policy. So I'll talk tonight a little bit about just Ann Arbor Public Schools, who we are, and some of our metrics, review the vision and the mission behind the plan, some of the background pieces that Dr. Swift mentioned, the Board Policy 8000, the task force, and the bond, as well as some of the research we've done with the task force on sustainability plans at other school districts and our local institutions. There are school districts with sustainability plans. Typically, they are large or urban school districts, so in that research, you'll see information about Seattle Public Schools, Boston Public Schools, Baltimore Public Schools. But I'm really excited that Ann Arbor has taken this on here in Michigan. And then we'll review in more detail some of the aspects of the plan, and also discuss some of the immediate actions that we are taking now to implement recommendations coming from the plan. And then I'll just show the Thought Exchange and the feedback link for that. So just at high level, we serve about 17,000 students and have about 2,000 direct employees. The district covers an attendance area of about 125 square miles. We have 35 buildings. Those buildings comprise about 3.5 million square feet. That does sound like a lot of square footage. The University of Michigan is roughly 40 million square feet, and there are roughly 250 to 350 million square feet of residential property in Ann Arbor. Our campuses encompass about 723 acres of land, and we cover the entire city of Ann Arbor as well as portions of many surrounding townships. So the mission that's driving the plan is, AAPS is committed to care for the environment, to model and achieve an environmentally sustainable existence with every decision and in every area of the organization. The vision is that in all decisions, we will embody and live the value of care for our earth and the environment. Individual, team, and district decisions are consistent with care for the earth. So I won't go through this in great detail, but when you see the entire framework, which will be posted on the website tomorrow for your viewing, there is an Appendix A, which includes Environmental Policy 8000. We'll also talk a little bit about the bond and how one of the four cornerstones of that is environmental sustainability. The Environmental Sustainability Task Force, I have some, a couple of slides about the work of that group. And then also recognizing that we have a lot of great partners in Washtenaw County that are working on similar efforts, and so I'll talk a little bit about that. So this policy, I do remember sitting with Trustee Kelly and Dr. Swift and a couple other trustees back in late 2018, and this was really a fundamental document for us. It's not very long. It's not very, there's not, you know, it's not a seven-page policy, but it really lays out a very concrete set of principles for us, recognizing that climate change is real, increasing, and caused by human activity. It kind of saddens me that we even need to say that, but it needed to be said. We will, we are committed to action and recognize that a healthy environment is important for future generations, and we have a responsibility to act. And we will prioritize environmental sustainability education, developing student leaders in these areas. We will be conscious of the environment and climate change with our district buildings and grounds, and we will build and enhance partnerships to support this work here and across the community. And so just speaking to the bond a little bit, there were four cornerstones to the bond: teaching and learning, safety, health, and well-being, efficient and effective support systems and services, and sustainable and environmentally responsible infrastructure, creating resilient schools for climate change. And this is directly from the bond materials here. And so in those documents, we kind of set out key themes and the infrastructure that the bond could provide to support those themes. So things like creating optimized learning environments for our student with good natural light, fresh air, and good temperature acoustics that all support teaching and learning, charting a course to carbon neutrality, promoting biodiversity and healthy sites, creating a culture that supports recycling and composting, using long-lasting materials that require minimal maintenance, and utilizing the Freeman Environmental Education Center as a place to demonstrate many of these practices. And then the supporting infrastructure is listed below. Things like renovating classrooms with modern, human-centric features, designing buildings for disaster resilience and passive survivability, dimmable LED lighting, upgrading our busing fleet, and you can see a lot of other things there as well. These were part of the bond campaign and commitments that we made leading up to the referendum in November of 2019. So moving on to the task force, you can see the membership here. And again, thank you to all these folks who served on this, to the trustees, to Jason Bing, who was really instrumental in getting this effort launched. And the charge of the task force was to advise the Board of Education on the development of a formal sustainability plan. And that's what we've been doing for the last year or so. And you can see, we did present the work of the task force up to April of 2022, and there's a YouTube link here. It does start at minute 43, so you can skip right to that content if you're interested. We met frequently, monthly, for many months, and then in June, July, and August, we broke into working groups to meet in specific areas. And one of the tools that we used to analyze different goals and objectives was a Smarty Goal template. And that takes a particular goal, or a concept, or a proposed initiative, and breaks it down into different areas so you can really kind of start to digest, you know, can we be specific about what we're saying? Do we have a metric? Is it measurable? Is it attainable? Do we have the resources, whether funding or staffing, to attain that goal? Is it relevant? Does it matter to the school district and our core mission? Can we put time-based metrics? Can we say when things are going to happen? And of course, is it inclusive? Does it include all of our stakeholders, and is it equitable? So that was a really powerful tool for the task force to evaluate various proposed ideas. We did a lot of case studies in the beginning. As I mentioned, there are a number of larger, typically larger, urban school districts that have sustainability plans, and we used this kind of framework here, looking at the inputs, what resources are they using, what are they doing, what are their activities, what are their outputs, what are the results? Do they have short or midterm goals, and what's their long-term vision? And so we spent quite a while looking at those plans and learning from those. And then we kind of grabbed all the ideas that we saw in the different plans and came up with this list. So you see on the right, a giant list of sustainability initiatives at different school districts from our research, and then we evaluated them. We basically voted as individuals. Each person got three stars, and they could pick which of these initiatives they thought were most important. Not that other things aren't important, but what, from your personal perspective as a member of the task force, what's most important on this list to you? And we have a summary of that on the next slide. And so I've highlighted those areas that got five or more votes here. You'll see school green teams rising to the top, but far and above the highest ranking was a robust curriculum integration of sustainability content. Also, rising to the top were outdoor learning environments and frequent and regular reporting was highly rated. So you can see, and there's a lot of other things on here that are also important, and many of these other items are included in the plan, but those were the ones that, from the task force, that school green teams, robust curriculum integration, outdoor learning environments, and a framework or a method for regular reporting and accountability rose to the top from that analysis. We went on to do a SWOT and a SOAR activities. SWOT is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And SOAR is, takes the strengths and the opportunities and looks at aspirations and results. Aspirations being sort of vision-level kind of things, and results are how do we know if we've achieved those visions? And so you'll see some of the stickies on the aspiration side, you know, carbon neutrality, all stakeholders are engaged to reach sustainability goals, the district is seen as a national leader in sustainability for K-12 schools, comprehensive, integrated curriculum. Those are some of the aspirations. And on the result side, you know, how do we measure this? How do we know that we've hit some of these things? The Ann Arbor community reaches carbon neutrality goals. Every student at AAPS participates in sustainability project every year. AAPS diverts 80% of its waste from landfills. So those are some of the results that came out of these brainstorming sessions. And again, I think Jenny mentioned it, it was a little weird. We met over Zoom kind of the whole time, but this kind of whiteboard tool was really helpful to gather everybody's thoughts. And we did then break into working groups over the summer, as I mentioned. Those working groups were teaching and learning, climate resilience, health and wellness, and community partners. And you can see some of the early thoughts when we're all together in a group about what might be covered in these different working group discussions. And so I mentioned we did research. This is some of the research from the task force, some other research that myself and other staff members did. I mean, you can see links to all of these sustainability plans at different school districts, really fascinating read if someone wants to kind of dig into this. You'll also see links to the current City of Ann Arbor Plan, the draft Washtenaw County Plan, and the University of Michigan's plan. And part of what we did was look at, you know, what are some of the key metrics or goals in different areas? Carbon and energy goals, waste goals, water goals, transportation and busing, curriculum and education, environmental justice, gardening, and construction design guidelines. And you can see here the first half of those schools, and on the next slide, the rest of them there. And this is, again, included in the full document as an appendix for further review. So this is, we saw this graphic in the beginning of the presentation. This is the overall kind of organization of the plan, looking at responsible operations, maintenance, and construction, environmental education and climate literacy, and healthy school campuses guided by core values, shared commitments, and community partnerships. And I'll talk a little bit about those next. So core values, and some of these come from the Board Policy, and some of them developed through our discussions. Core value, you know, climate change is a real deal, and we need to do something about it. And number two, we have a responsibility to do something, to lessen our harmful activities and to promote activities that restore the environment. Number three, we also need to recognize our critical mission of teaching and learning. That's a place where we, as an institution, as a partner in our community, have a special role to play. And we will continue to support healthy and sustainable school campuses. We also recognize that the negative impacts, and I really appreciate Court mentioning this, environmental justice in his comments, environmental degradation and climate change disproportionately impact marginalized and vulnerable populations. I think there's a lot of rich teaching and learning and action to be had in that area. Shared commitments, these are, these are things to do, if you will. These are, these are things that as individuals, as schools, and as a district, that we think are important, that are values and commitments that we should all embrace. Reduce the use of disposable plastic, recycle and compost whenever possible, be conscious of food waste, as Dan mentioned, that's a huge problem. There's statistics that upwards of 30% of the food in the United States just ends up basically in the trash and going to a landfill. You know, we need to think about that. Obviously, never litter, be mindful of energy waste, walk, bike, and take public transportation when possible, conserve water, and be respectful of the outdoor environment. And you'll see on the right side there, for those that are not familiar, these are the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. It's really a fascinating, well-developed piece of consensus work that the United Nations has done, and there's a lot of alignment between those Sustainable Development Goals and these shared commitments. Also, our community partnerships. The Ann Arbor Public Schools serves a central role in the education of generations of students in our community. As the Ann Arbor community faces the opportunities and challenges of the climate crisis, we fully embrace our responsibility in the community and join our many partners working towards shared environmental sustainability goals. It is the next generation in our schools today that will face the increasing impacts of climate change. By empowering them with a climate-informed education, AAPS will help create the foundation for their success, and ultimately, the success of our community in rising to meet an uncertain climate change future. And so we look forward to continued partnerships with the City of Ann Arbor, the University of Michigan, and Washtenaw County in this work. And so those three sections that I mentioned earlier, responsible operations, maintenance, and construction, environmental education and climate literacy, and healthy and sustainable school campuses are further detailed in 11 areas for action. And you'll see in the first one there, we have some of the classics here. If you read a lot of sustainability plans like I do, there's some recurring buckets, if you will: energy, water, waste, transportation, scope three indirect emissions, and I'll speak a little bit about that in a minute, and new construction and renovation. In environmental education and climate literacy, we recognize, we do both core academics, kind of traditional education, we also have a lot of enrichment learning that happens outside of the typical classroom environment, and so we have some areas for action there as well. And for healthy and sustainable school campuses, we kind of broke things down into three buckets: the indoor environment, the outdoor environment, and our food systems. And when you look at the full report, you'll notice, you'll see each of these 11 areas for action broken down into six categories of detail. Progress, what has been completed or is ongoing in this area. That's a really important section, because what we're really talking about is institutional change. And we need people to come along with us in this work and not feel like they're being dragged or told what to do. And one of the best ways to do that is to recognize the work that they're already doing and support that work and take that work to the next level. So each one of these sections begins with progress, and then we talk about opportunities and challenges. You know, what are constraints, what are opportunities, and the like. Then we talk about next steps. What are our next steps in action and in planning and in study? And then after that, there's a reporting and metrics discussion. You know, what is, some of these things have very simple metrics. If you think about energy, it's kilowatt hours in terms of natural gas. Other areas, the metrics are a little harder to define. But how do we measure each of these areas? Responsible departments, who is responsible, and who, what other departments might be needed to help support the work of a responsible department? And then finally, collaborators, who else can contribute to this work, whether it's students, staff, other local institutions, nonprofits, community groups, et cetera? Who are our partners and collaborators in these areas? And so as we implement in these areas of action, it's important to think again about this iterative process, about a living process. As I mentioned in the beginning, I've been doing this work for longer than I care to share, honestly, but it's an ever-changing landscape. As an example, when I, with Mr. Bing, started putting solar panels on schools many years ago, we were paying roughly many years ago, we were paying roughly twelve dollars per watt of installed capacity at a school. Today, that was twelve dollars in about 2009. Today, you can do that for two dollars a watt. And so the math of making that a financial reality has changed dramatically in that time period. And you could say the same thing about battery technology. You could say the same thing about scope three emissions. You could say the same thing about a lot of areas, that it's rapidly changing, and in unpredictable ways sometimes. And so this iterative process that we'd like to use involves staff and administration, preliminary planning in an area, then going to our board, and our community, and our schools for some input and feedback, to then inform more detailed planning before we move into implementation, and then kind of rinse and repeat, assess and evaluate our progress. And you'll see this exact rationale in the composting pilot, and I'm going to talk about in a minute, assess and evaluate, and then start over again with planning, how do we expand and make this work better? And so I'm really pleased to share some immediate actions that we're prepared to make as part of adopting this plan. I probably wasn't at the school, I've been here almost six years now. I probably wasn't here for maybe two weeks before somebody asked me about styrofoam in the lunchrooms, and I've been hearing it for a long time. And so I'm pleased to share that we will be eliminating the use of styrofoam in our cafeterias, beginning in January, and are committed to finalizing that process by the end of this school year, so that we will start the 2023-24 school year styrofoam-free. We will also I know, that's going to cut down on my email quite a bit. We will also be piloting composting, full cafeteria composting, next school year at three elementary schools. We'll determine an application process. I've already got principals emailing me and texting me, can we be one of the schools? You know, we want to pick them carefully so that we can have an effective pilot. But that's a really exciting development for us. It will take a lot of learning on our side about how do we best support this, what practices work best, who's responsible for what, and a lot of the other things, education, et cetera. So I'm really excited about that. On school gardens, and you'll remember, school gardens and outdoor learning was ranked highly by the task force as a priority. We do have school gardens at many schools, but the activities kind of ebb and flow, and some schools don't have gardens, and we want to expand to ensure we have active neighborhood school gardens at all elementary and P.A. campuses. So that's an initiative that we're committed to taking on. And to support that, and we are planning an outdoor learning environmental evaluation. So in addition to evaluating the garden infrastructure, we want to look at things like, do we have nature trails? What kind of other recreational activities are available at the school? And to evaluate all of that, so we know what we have and how we can make improvements in those areas. So that's a project that we're going to be starting this spring at assessment, and that will inform the expansion of school gardens and other outdoor learning opportunities. We also will be inviting teacher champions to serve as leaders in their schools. And this is a best practice across the country, and in this work, you have to not only identify, but support those teacher champions who can help drive change and bring a school community along. I'm also pleased to announce that we formed a partnership with the City of Ann Arbor Office of Sustainability and Innovations, and we'll be offering teacher mini-grants, roughly on the order of five hundred dollars. We've still got to work out some of the details, but that will be widely available across the district for implementing sustainability projects at the school level. And those could be any number of projects that people were excited about, and that a little bit of seed money would help to actualize. And then on the notion of aligned curriculum, and Court spoke to this a little bit as well, there is a lot of sustainability content kind of scattered around, outside of the core environmental education coursework that some people do. We want to do a comprehensive mapping of that curriculum, and analyze that, and strategically plan how we can kind of take that to the next level. And we will be forming a new Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee under Board Policy 2420, and we will be inviting individuals representing local institutions, nonprofits, and the business community, as well as students and staff, to join that ongoing sustainability advisory committee. And so I'm going to talk a little bit right now, I guess, about greenhouse gas emissions. This is, really drives a lot of the thinking in our community around sustainability, and we've adopted, and many others have adopted, the same sort of framework that the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change at the United Nations uses, and that's looking at scope one, two, and three emissions. And I will, just to frame this out, and to kind of emphasize our role in the community as an educational institution, we really don't contribute, I mean, one percent of our community's greenhouse gas emissions, approximately. That's not a big lot, that's not a lot, but in order for us to be effective on the educational side, we have to also be effective on the institutional side. And so even though we're this relatively small percentage, by doing things like electric buses, solar panels, composting, minimizing waste, and all these other things, that's reinforcing the educational side. So that's really important for us to take this on. And just roughly speaking, scope one emissions are direct emissions. So that's greenhouse gases that come from the burning, in the case of Ann Arbor Public Schools, mostly the burning of natural gas for heating, as well as emissions that come from our buses and other fleet vehicles. Scope two emissions are indirect emissions associated with purchased electricity. And then scope three, that's the big kind of nebulous bucket that holds everything else. All of your purchased goods and services, and a whole lot of other things fall into scope three. So on scope one emissions, those, again, are those directly attributed to AAPS through our, mostly our space and water heating and our vehicles. Our goal is to eliminate those emissions by 2035. And a big part of that is supported by our bond, and the ability to make renovations to buildings, to electrify those buildings and our vehicles over time. And we will define and detail a plan to hit those goals, but that's a heavy lift. We've got a lot of work to do to think about what's a realistic interim goal, and you'll hear, again, about the bond plan this evening. And so that's our goal, is by 2035, we will have eliminated direct emissions, scope one, at Ann Arbor Public Schools. Scope two emissions, those, again, are those emissions attributed to purchased electricity in our case. And we will eliminate scope two emissions by 2024. We will be the first major institution in the county to achieve this. There are others coming right behind us, but we will probably be first over the finish line. That's through a combination of three things. We have installed quite a bit of rooftop solar, that accounts for about six percent of our scope two emissions. The state of Michigan also requires utilities to provide fifteen percent of their electricity from renewables, so that's another fifteen percent that we already have because of large wind farms primarily in Michigan. And then we've entered a contract with DTE Energy to supply the additional roughly eighty percent of our electricity from utility-scale wind and solar projects built in the state of Michigan to supply the Ann Arbor Public Schools. And so we will eliminate scope two emissions by 2024. So scope three emissions are attributed to a wide range of other activities, purchased goods and services, construction materials, waste, commuting, even financial investments. In APS, these emissions come from things such as laptops and technology, books, paper, construction materials, other supplies, as well as contracted services such as lawn maintenance, snow removal, custodial, and food services, and other areas. Measuring scope three emissions is very challenging, and it requires an accounting of both upstream carbon emissions, the emissions associated with mining, logging, manufacturing, packing, and distribution, and also downstream emissions, the use of the product and its eventual disposal. So as an example, this pen that I'm holding has a little bit of metal on it, and it's mostly made out of plastic, and there's some ink inside here. And so in order to account for the scope three emissions of this pen, I would need to understand where did this metal come from. It's probably an alloy, so there's probably several different sources of mining involved. The plastics maybe came from Louisiana, I don't know, some oil refinery somewhere, and I'm not even sure where ink comes from anymore. So you would need to add up all of those little bits of carbon emissions, and then add to that the packaging and processing at the factory, the shipping of that pen to OfficeMax or wherever, then me driving to OfficeMax, buying the pen, bringing it home, disposing of the packaging, and then eventually disposing of the pen, which has its own greenhouse gas emissions associated with it. So it's a very complex calculation. Some industries are moving along pretty quickly. For instance, the furniture industry is pretty far ahead on that, and some other industries in the construction area, but it's still a developing measurement tool. So while the global community is developing methods for calculating scope three emissions, it is impossible at this time to accurately calculate the district's scope three emissions for all areas. Community partnerships will be critical in reducing scope three emissions, as many solutions are beyond the district's control, and require transforming the marketplace for goods and services to carbon neutrality. Effort will require creative strategies, working at scale across our city, county, region, nation, and world. And we will collaborate with local partners to better understand, track, and reduce scope three emissions. And I will note that the University of Michigan, in their sustainability plan, are committed to setting targets for scope three emission reductions by 2025. They haven't set targets, they're planning to set them in 2025, because they need all this time to study and understand the problem. And one of the things that Ann Arbor Public Schools can do, and our goal for this coming school year, is to develop purchasing and construction guidelines that reflect our commitment to reducing scope three emissions, and to begin piloting those guidelines in 2024. So on the purchasing end, when we're buying the pen, or we're buying the new school building, or the renovated school building, or, you know, reams and reams of paper, one of the questions that we want to understand how to ask in the marketplace is, what are the scope three emissions associated with your products or your services? And that will be, I think, a really important step for us to just understand, what is the right question to ask this vendor regarding scope three emissions? And so that's our goal, is to develop those purchasing and construction guidelines, so that we can begin to ask the right questions, and gather the information to make progress in this area. And so, see a nice picture of the cover, Amy, Ms. Osinski, thank you for the beautiful cover. And you'll see here a little more detail on how some of these subsections break out inside of energy. For instance, we have energy efficiency and conservation. The easiest energy avoidance is through efficiency and conservation always, onsite renewable electricity generation, onsite natural gas combustion and purchased electricity. Underwater, you'll see water quality, water conservation, and stormwater management. And then we have Section 1.3, waste reduction, reuse and recycling and composting, Section 1.4, transportation, 1.5, scope three emissions, and 1.6, new construction and renovation. Under core academics, we have environmental sustainability curriculum, social and environmental justice, and career technical education. Under enrichment learning, those green teams that we've been talking about, as well as the school gardens, and then the indoor environment, the outdoor environment, and our food systems. And so we are really looking forward to some public feedback on this plan. We're planning about a two-week window for public commentary through the Thought Exchange. And this will all be on the website, and probably a lot easier to find than clicking through some PowerPoint download, but the plan will be posted at this link, and the Thought Exchange link is provided here as well. And we will plan to be back here at this table in about two weeks to report on the results of the public feedback period. And so I think that's about the end of the presentation, and again, thank you, Board of Education, for your support of this work. It's really amazing to be here, bringing this forward for consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Laxal.